Welcome, everybody. Could we please get started? Welcome and good to the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for February 16th, 2021. I hope everybody is surviving the called. I think the worst is over for now. Item number one, Mr. Reynolds, if we could call the roll.
Counsel Person Brennan.
Here.
Councilman Whiting.
Here.
Counselor Contreras.
Here.
Counselor Lehman.
Here.
Mayor Mars.
Here. Thank you very much. Moving ahead to item number two, if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Moving ahead to item number three, approval of agenda. Mr. Reynolds, are there any changes, corrections?
Just a, nothing to the agenda specifically, Mr. Mayor and members of council, but I do want you to be aware that 4A3 on the consent agenda had left off the word no in regards to a line that states, "The police department has conducted the required background check and has found no reason to deny approving this license." It was an error that neglected to put the word no in there, so just as long as everybody understands that that's the case for 4A3. Otherwise, we are good. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, and we all received an email on that, and that'll be updated, so hopefully that's okay. Thank you. Counsel Whiting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended and as noted.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Counsel Brennan. Further discussion, discussion, discussion. By voice vote, Mr. Reynolds.
Counselor Brennan.
Aye.
Counselor Whiting. Counselor Contreras.
Aye.
Counselor Lehman.
Aye.
Mayor Mars.
Aye. Thank you. Agenda's been approved. Moving ahead to item number four, consent agenda. Mr. Reynolds, any changes, corrections?
Not other than it's already been noticed, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Consent agenda's before us. Counsel Lehman.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Counsel Contreras for the consent agenda. Before, there would be no further discussion. We would, before we vote, we will, Mr. Reynolds will read the consent agenda into the public record. Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. These are the consent agenda items for 16th February of 2021. 4A1 approves the city council meeting minutes for 2nd February 2021. 4A2 approves a renewal of a consumption and display license for Dilemma Brewing Company, doing business as Shakopee Brew Hall. 4A3 approves the application for a taxicab license for Kurt Sharden, doing business as Curtsy Ride. 4A4 adopts Resolution Number 2021-TAC-021, which approves a premise permit for the Prior Lake Savage Hockey Association, located at Stone Brook Golf Club, 2693 County Road 79. 4A5 is the January monthly finance review. 4A6 approves the renewal of a three-year Microsoft enterprise agreement through SHI for amount of $67,923, a year, plus any additional license true up as determined necessary. 4B1 approves the issuance of an RFP for Parks and Recreation software. 4C1 adopts Resolution Number R2021-TAC-017, which sets a public hearing date for a vacation of public drainage and utility easements within Outlaw E and Outlot F, Windermere, and Outlot A and Outlot B, Windermere South, 2nd Edition, located off 17th Avenue, Windermere Way, and Attenborough Street. 4C2 adopts Resolution Number R2020-TAC-018, which sets a public hearing date for a vacation of public drainage and utility easements within Howe 1st Edition, located south of Stagecoach Road at County Highway 101. 4D1 adopts Resolution 2021-TAC-011, applying for the 2020 Local Road Improvement Program Grant for the Adams Marystown Road CSAH-15 and TH169 interchange corridor and roundabout improvements. 4D2 approves the purchase of three Bobcat skid steers from Lano Equipment Incorporated in the total amount of $20,371.86, and one cat skid steer from Ziegler Incorporated in the total amount of $4,800. 4D3 adopts Resolution Number R2021-TAC-019, which receives a feasibility report and calls for a public hearing for the 2021 Alley Reconstruction Project, which is CIF-20-TAC-009. And 4D4 authorizes the execution of a professional services agreement with WSB and Associates for design, construction, inspection, and administration services in the amount of $790,192 for the TH169 Bridge Project, which is PR-TAC-22-TAC-004. Mayor, your mic is shut off.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds, very much. I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as stated. It has been read into the public record. Mr. Reynolds, by voice vote then.
Counselor Brennan.
Aye.
Counselor Whiting.
Aye.
Counselor Contreras.
Aye.
Counselor Lehman.
Aye.
Mayor Mars.
Aye. Thank you. Consent agenda has been passed. We will move forward. Item number five, now I'd like to call on any resident that would like to come forward and speak on an item not on the agenda. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and welcome on an item not on the agenda. Seeing none, Mr. Reynolds, have we received any electronic communication?
No, sir, we have not.
Counsel Lehman.
Mayor, I did receive one electronic concern from a citizen that I passed on to staff, but it was received today late in the day, so.
Okay.
Parking-related issue, winter parking south of 169, I believe. I got the address forwarded to all the staff. Staff will follow up with it.
Yeah, and we have that.
Thank you.
We have that information, but I didn't recognize that as being part of something that would be brought forward tonight.
No.
Okay. Seeing there's no citizen that wants to speak before the council on item not on the agenda, we haven't received any electronic comments in regard to that, then we would move forward to item six, which is item Business Removed From Consent. We had none. Moving ahead then, we would move to 7A, which is a public hearing for the 2001 Street Utility Reconstruction Project, and I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing. Mr. Counsel Lehman.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to open a public hearing.
A second.
I have a motion, and Counsel Brennan, was that a second? I have a motion and I have a second to open the public hearing. Further discussion, discussion, discussion. By voice vote, Mr. Reynolds.
Counselor Brennan.
Aye.
Counselor Whiting.
Aye.
Counselor Contreras.
Aye.
Counselor Lehman.
Aye.
And Mayor Mars.
Aye. The motion passes to open the public hearing for 7A, and we will welcome Ryan to present. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. With that, I should have a presentation screen there before you for the 2021 Street and Utility Reconstruction Project. This is the public improvement hearing tonight, February 16th. Next slide. This project is a city-initiated program that is in our CIP. This was originally identified for construction in 2020 and was delayed one year to '21 to accommodate the redevelopment of the River Bluff apartment area and to be able to coordinate the infrastructure improvements with what's necessary for that building. This is Project 2021 Street Utility Reconstruction CIF-21-007. And of note, we are following the State 429 statute for assessments with this local public improvement project. The proposed project location, so the original CIP project showed all the streets that are shaded here in gray. With that said, the city council approved of developers', excuse me, the Shakopee Economic Development Authority approved a developers' agreement with GON LLC to build the River Bluff Apartments as well as the infrastructure for Scott Street, Levy Drive, and Atwood that surround those apartments. So for this specific public hearing, the proposed project location is Scott Street from 2nd to 1st Avenue, Levy Drive from Atwood Street to Home Street, Fuller Street from 1st Avenue to Levy Drive, and the amendment to the feasibility added the alley between Atwood Street and Fuller and between Levy Drive and 1st Avenue. So some existing conditions for you. All these roads have deteriorated significantly, aging infrastructure. So Scott Street specifically, as far as the existing conditions go here, we have curb and gutter on the north half of the block. This picture here is looking north, showing you the south half, and you can see no curb and gutter, real control for parking, et cetera, in this area. There's an existing four-inch ductile iron water main that's in place, and there is about 60 feet of eight-inch PVC sanitary sewer main that starts at County Road 69 or 1st Avenue and extends 60 feet to serve, I believe, the landscaping company. The roadway has deteriorated significantly. There's water and mud out in the road in some areas, and the pavement has gotten pretty bad here. So for our proposed conditions, we're looking to reconstruct the bituminous surface to a new nine-ton standard and add curb and gutter to that south half, and we'll need to reconstruct the curb and gutter on that north half. We had resident info meetings and such that I can talk to you a little bit later. Residents in this area, particularly the depot building, were very concerned that they are currently using that wide paved area for parking for large events at the quilt shop, and so parallel parking and diagonal parking were extremely important to the property owners in this area. We added those. We, as stated, will extend the curb and gutter and the sidewalk. There's currently a sidewalk on the east side of the block that only runs from 1st Avenue down to about half the block to the alley, so we'd extend this down to the railroad crossing. And then Shakopee Public Utilities has asked us to upgrade the eight-inch ductile, or two-and-eight-inch ductile iron water main, requiring a directional drilling under the railroad tracks. No sanitary sewer main or street lighting improvements are proposed for this block of the project. This is what it will look like. Right now, it's just one wide swath of pavement out there. We are following the lane lines, if you will, so if you're driving northbound on Scott Street, the lane lines stay consistent, but two 13-foot drive lanes as well as a 10-foot shoulder on the west side of the street. Then you can see on the east side, kind of the south half of the block adjacent to the rail depot building, we've added diagonal parking there. I've absolutely fit as many spots as that we can accommodate in this location for that property owner, as that was her concern. The next block, that east half on the north of the alley, we've added some parallel parking. There's an adjacent resident and business across the street. That little patch that you see on 2nd Avenue is what's necessary to accommodate the directional drilling or the jacking underneath the railroad tracks, so it'll connect at that location. And then moving on to Levy Drive, these pictures tell you exactly what you're looking at for streets out here. Ponding water settlements badly deteriorated. You can see that Public Works has had to go and throw, throw and go in here. The existing roadway is about 27 feet wide right now. It does have concrete curb and gutter and a limited storm sewer system. Incidentally, there's actually storm catch basins right by the top picture, but the water, the street has settled so badly in this location that the water can't even make it to those catch basins. There is an eight-foot bituminous DNR trail that runs on the north side of the roadway here. We'll need to reconstruct a small portion of that, and I'll touch on that later. There is an existing eight-inch ductile iron water main for a significant portion of the roadway, typically running underneath the trail on the north side of the road. There is no sanitary sewer main for these blocks of Levy Drive. The two large apartment buildings that have sanitary sewer here actually have services that run north from their building across Levy Drive and then connect to the trunk, River District trunk line, sanitary line down by the river. We are proposing, we're in the process of investigating those two lines, but reconstructing the portion of those services that are underneath the roadway to protect our future investment on that roadway to assist the residents or the property owners there. The streets were constructed in 1967, and you can see no water main improvements or no sanitary for that. Levy Drive, the proposed improvements, we're looking similarly to construct a bituminous surface, nine-ton curb and gutter for the whole thing. We're looking at adding parallel parking on the north side of the roadway, and that'll show on the next drawings, and I'll discuss that in further detail. We would install concrete sidewalk along those parking stalls on the north side, adjacent to the park, and we will reconstruct the trail where impacted. We do propose to install a couple of additional storms or catch basins to capture some of the additional surface water drainage in this area, as well as there's actually two concrete flumes that come from the parking lot of the 200 Levy Drive building, kind of non-standard, and so we're looking to correct that situation as well. We would reconstruct the sanitary sewer services for the two apartments under Levy Drive. We'll get everything up to ADA compliance, and we are recommending adding a couple of streetlights for those parking stalls along Levy Drive and along that trail. No sewer or water main improvements are proposed. So here's the layout that we're proposing for Levy Drive. Generally, this constructs the road to that same 26 or 27 foot wide, but it does add the parking lane on the north side of Levy Drive there. For those of you who are familiar, across from that Levy Drive apartment, there is like a lookout gazebo. This is kind of part of that DNR trailhead, and on the east end of this as well is the Huber Park. There's a parking lot on this east end, and as part of our effort to accommodate future traffic and parking needs for the River Bluff development and the restaurant that is proposed, as well as the park improvements and to kind of coordinate this with the overall park master plan, we're recommending these improvements by adding that parking. You can see there's a sidewalk immediately adjacent, so pedestrians that are, get out of their car, have a walking surface and can safely cross and navigate our street systems. And there is a portion of trail there that will be immediately adjacent to that sidewalk. We'll stripe that off, make sure we meet all ADA and safety guidelines, as that's getting closer to the river. So Fuller Street, the existing conditions, it's currently 45 feet wide. It does have concrete curb and gutter and a storm sewer system. This road was actually built in several different portions, some of it 1967, some of it 1994, and then the last little piece, as it connected to County Road 101 right here, was actually built in 2004. There is an eight-inch ductile iron water main that was installed in 1980, but there is no sanitary sewer in this block. Again, the apartments on both sides of this are served north to that river trunk line. There is also sidewalk on the entire length of the east side and a half a block of sidewalk on the west side of the roadway from County Road 69 down to the alley or kind of the city parking lot and that apartment building. So our proposed conditions, similarly, are to reconstruct the roadway and the curb and gutter in this area. We had analyzed, you know, the pavement isn't as bad on this one block as some of the other areas, but by the time we would do an overlay, come in and get everything up to ADA, we'd end up removing probably about 50% of the sidewalk and the curb and gutter, and the pavement's in bad enough shape that it warrants keeping this whole block on the entire cycle as the rest of the street. We are looking to upgrade some of the original storm sewer manholes. Our block built, and they were built in the 60s, so we're looking at upgrading that, and with this whole process, we did hire out televising to investigate our storm sewer system in this area. There is a large, I believe it's 60-inch trunk line that runs that actually serves most of the downtown Shakopee area and enters exits at the Minnesota River in a concrete flume. So we had camera televising to make sure all that other infrastructure was appropriate and no improvements were needed. So for this block, again, reconstruct things, get everything ADA, and no sanitary sewer water main or street lighting improvements are needed for this block. All the lighting is up to snuff LED. This does show you our proposed layout. We will start at the 45 feet wide for Fuller Street, starting at County Road 69. As we move north and hit those two driveways to the parking lots and/or the alley, we'll actually taper it down to about 41 feet. The 45 is necessary on the south half to line up the driving lanes. There's actually a stoplight at Fuller Street, and there's turn lanes and through lanes on the south side, so in order to line everything up and make that jive, we'll stay wide at the beginning and then throttle it down a little bit. Parking lanes, et cetera, on that. The last piece of this, and this was added after you initially received the feasibility report, and basically, all the red boxed amendments in the feasibility report that was provided with tonight's council addressed this alley. So historically, when we've done our street reconstruction projects, the city hasn't had a robust alley improvement project. We have done some of the concrete alleys in the downtown area. The expense, the current assessment policy requires a 100% assessment on alleys in residential neighborhoods, and therefore, I think the costs associated with that, most residents have kind of said, "But I'll keep my alley as is." With that said, we had some, I think one of the council members as well as a resident had questioned, "Why aren't we looking at this alley?" So we did actually rapidly took a look at it and thought about it and gave it some strong consideration. So with that said, we're recommending to reconstruct this bituminous alley, and the existing conditions are here before you. 13 foot wide. If you could actually go back one slide, thank you. There's no concrete curb and gutter. We do have storm sewer catch basins on both ends of the alley that can collect the water. Spuck has an eight-inch ductile iron water main pipe that runs down this alley. There's no sewer, and it's from the pictures, you can see again deteriorated alley and pavement conditions. So we're proposing to do a full-depth reclamation and reconstruction of the bituminous alley to 12 feet wide. There are no other improvements, no sanitary sewer, water main, or street light improvements proposed. With that said, during the public engagement process, the adjacent apartment owner was very, wanted us to consider undergrounding the electric power lines that run down this alley as he believes they detract from the property. So as we continue into final design, we'll be coordinating with Shakopee Public Utilities to see if we can make that happen as well. As part of the entire River Bluff project, as well as the city's street reconstruction project in this area, Shakopee Public Utilities is reworking a significant portion of their, I don't know all the details of it, the size and scope, but the lines that are on overhead near the river in this location, it's a fairly important circuit for them, and that whole system will actually be taken down and undergrounded in a concrete dunk bank in this project. And as part of that, they're evaluating their infrastructure on Fuller Street as well as this adjacent alley.
Ryan, this is Bill Reynolds.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to make a clarification. If the alley in a residential neighborhood is gravel and we're looking to upgrade it, then it would be 100% assessment. But if it's already bituminous, then it goes to our policy where it'll be 30%.
You know, to be honest, I can review that assessment policy, but I think the language, we took a look at this earlier. If we are, it says that all of the improvements in a residential neighborhood are actually 100%. So I know for our street improvement projects, we have been doing 30%, and then when we were doing the downtown alley, so it says in our central business district, 30% of the alleys are assessed. However, in the residential, it still remains at that 100%. Now, this block right here specifically was added to our central business district, so that is part of this in that we were proposing the 30% assessment, and I can speak to that a little bit more on a future slide.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So again, I did speak very clearly about the scope of the project in the public improvement hearing for tonight, but I do, I know there's questions about how this ties together with the River Bluff development in those streets. So here you can see the conceptual picture from GON for the apartment building that has been proposed and approved. They're, I think they said 80% footings and foundation in the ground, and they're looking for building permits in the near future. And city staff is working diligently with them and their engineer to get all the other, the building permits, submittals, and stormwater, as well as our street layouts refined. But what you see on your screen is pretty much what we're looking at at this point with the apartments, as well as the at-grade restaurants. with the apartments as well as the at-grade restaurants with the lookout there. You can imagine parking is going to be in high demands in this area as it is in most of our downtown. So we've accommodated what we can. The apartment building does have some underground parking themselves. They do have the internal lot between the units that serves primarily for the resident parking and then for those restaurant patrons and other vet visitors or guests and the adjacent businesses on Scott Street, we've added as much parking as we can here. So we fit in a whole bunch of diagonal parking. This should look very familiar if you took a look at aerial photos of our existing central business district by the old, by the enclave facility now, the old city hall site, et cetera. So a very, very similar look and feel landscaping, street lighting, everything else that's proposed will kind of match what we have in our downtown business district. Some dimensions for you, drivelines typically are that 26 feet. You know, those parking stalls add nine by 19 foot diagonal stalls. There are a few parallel stalls in the southeast corner down there at Atwood Street near County Road 69. We did add parking where we could on Scott Street, some in adjacent to the laundromat. There's a grocery store and deli there as well as an auto repair shop and we're trying to accommodate some parking. We also at the request of the local businesses and the council member inquiry, a few extra spots up in that northwest corner on Scott Street as well. So this will come back to city council for further action and no action is being requested on this layout or this tonight, but I just wanted to show this and make sure you understood how this all fits together. With that, it's a street reconstruction project, right? I think the next slide talks about the inconveniences. Our expectation and what we do here is everything is restored with these projects. So brand new asphalt, new curb and gutter, new sidewalk. We do all the restoration and make sure residents are happy. We want to make sure these things look as good or better than when we got there. So everything will get a fresh coating of topsoil, will have sod to replace all the yards. Anybody's whose driveways are impacted will get reconstructed with the same materials as they currently have. We are upgrading the alley so the alley would also get the concrete and aprons as well. Those project inconveniences I talked about, so you can just see here, looks like a nightmare trying to get through any one of these project areas, right? There's dust, there's dirt, there's noise, there's mud, depends on the day, I can have sunshine one day and mud the next or right? So we do our best. We have experienced city staff that worked through this and we provide we multiple levels of outreach, direct mailings monthly. We have our e-signup service so residents can get updates. All of our contact information is out there so that we can make sure that we talk to residents, accommodate their needs and help them get through some of these inconveniences. So into the good stuff, proposed cost apportionment for this project. So we're looking at a total cost of right around $971,000. These are estimated costs based on the feasibility design. With that, approximately $736,000 of this cost is the street costs, including street lighting. Approximately $108,000 will come from the storm sewer fund. $10,000 or so will come from the sanitary sewer fund. Shockley Public Utilities would be asked to compensate for the $117,000 in water main, leaving you with that $971,000. We did add approximately 8% contingency to the budget for any, anything that's experienced that's extraordinary in the field and we've estimated our engineering and admin and legal fees as well. So special assessments, this is a 429 project and per city assessment policy, we are looking to to assess 30% of the accessible street improvements. So 30% of those accessible street improvements are used to determine the total amount that we assess of of the street improvements. In this particular project, we are proposing to assess on a front footage basis and some some exceptional notes here is that, for instance, the north half of Levy Drive is not proposed to be assessed. It it's adjacent to the city slash DNR trail and park. There's no properties, nobody really to gain benefit, so we've asked that that not be assessed. In addition, there is a city parking lot at Fuller Street and First Avenue. So that half of Fuller Street adjacent to the city parking lot also not proposed to be assessed. The bituminous trail and all street oversizing costs over 37 foot of width are also proposed to not be assessed. So anywhere where we put those extraordinarily wide parking areas, the the property owners aren't paying for those, they're paying for the first 37 feet of width of street. Everything else is proposed to be assessed from the capital improvement fund. And then the one other notable exception is that I have a single family residential property at 336 First Avenue West, so right at the corner of Scott and First Avenue, County Road 69. This property has the long side of their lot facing our project, but consistent with other projects, we we try to keep this fair for everybody. So residential properties like this, we've assessed a 60 foot equivalent and and get them for that length. The other 82 feet of property length that they have here would be proposed to be paid out of that capital improvement fund. So with that, we have a total amount of assessments of $137,000 for the street portion of this project, which equates to about $103.32 per front foot. And that front foot is all the the remaining lots after the exclusions divided by that We also are proposing an alley assessment. So with the alley improvements between Atwood and Fuller, First and Levy Drive, similarly with the assessment policy, 30% of these accessible street or alley improvements are used to determine our total accessible street improvements. A dollar amount is the $5,040 below. In the alley, all lots are proposed to be assessed on a front footage basis and the alley also is adjacent to that same city parking lot. So the portion of the alley adjacent to that lot is not proposed to be assessed, that that would be excluded. The assessment rate is about $12 per front foot along the alley. This is a map showing you the properties that are proposed to be assessed. Everything you see in that pink or magenta color would be assessed for the street improvements at a front footage basis. The cyan colored one is that residential lot that is getting the 60 foot equivalent assessment. And then the properties that are crosshatched with like that blue X or crosshatch, those would be the properties that would benefit from the alley improvements and are proposed to be assessed on the alley. We've included an assessment amortization chart here for you in talking with the finance director. It's believed that about a four and a half percent interest rate is appropriate for this project. Ultimately, this would be set at the final assessment hearing. Staff is proposing a 10-year repayment and you can see on an assessment amount of about $6,200, which is incidentally the the residential property that we're assessing. You can see here that if they make their annual payments, the interest over those 10 years can can add up to about $1,600. We stand here, you know, working down this project schedule. City Council did receive this feasibility report on February 2nd. Shortly thereafter, we held a resident info meeting on February 4th. The results of any conversations and surveys and public outreach was added to the amendment to the feasibility report and is included in the back. Tonight on February 16th, we are holding the public hearing. We're asking city council to authorize the project in order preparation of plans and specifications. Staff expects to have plans done and come back to city council on March 2nd to approve those plans and specs and authorize the ad for bid. We'd open bids around March 30th and then bring it back to city council for consideration around April 20th. Construction starts, you know, mid to late May and is usually wrapped up by September and then we'll be back this fall and October and November for the public hearing and and assessment, public hearing. And with that, I have no other additional slides and I stand for questioning.
Ryan, pretty thorough discussion and layout of this project. Thank you very much. Very appreciative of that and I know that city council had a lot of questions that were emailed to the city administrator and then put back out, answering a lot of these questions and reel some value there. The the special assessments aspect of it, that is just standard policy, correct?
Yeah, there's really nothing extraordinary here. Every project's a little different and the the assessment policy does allow for some leeway for staff to assess these as fairly and as equitably as as we can, as well as we always try to stay as close to past precedent as possible. So nothing really extraordinary here. Every street reconstruction project, residents that are benefit from these improvements are asked to pay the 30% of those accessible costs. And that to clarify for most people are the street costs. So it's the pavement, the curb and gutter asphalt, they're not paying for sewer or water improvements in those assessments.
Right. All right, thank you. Questions of staff? Questions of staff, Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of, one question and a comment. The question I have is if we could put the screen up of the whole overall project, I'm kind of looking at the curb lines and it just came to me when I was looking at it tonight. Ryan, can we, yeah, can we put the picture back up of all the streets in the?
Just give us a moment, please.
There you go. The the Scott Street, the Levy Drive, not so much one or two spots on Fuller where we kick out the curbs, you know, and I'm looking at that from a plowing standpoint saying we're really, it's making it difficult. So I'm looking for the efficiency on the plow side and the street sweeping side, but I understand why you're doing it. So how do we prevent the plow trucks from running into these curbs?
Yeah, I understand. Mayor and council members, thank you and good comment and something that we've talked about internally as well. The the only way to really add these parking stalls, other than just having a sea of pavement out there is a lot, is very similar to what we have in our downtown business district and and we have this exact same situation. With that said, there's design elements, so we made sure that we taper some of those curb returns so that the plows can kind of follow those curb lines and get in and out of these areas. There's no doubt about it, the first time that they plow these, it's not going to be efficient. They'll learn their route and kind of get used to this. A lot of the areas where we also had the diagonal parking, instead of making weird points or, you know, triangular areas that you're not going to be able to get that snow out. Similarly, we bent the curb in those areas so that cars can still park in those, but it makes it easier for us to get snow removal. No, no way around it. If you want to improve this area to be similar to our business district, there probably is a little bit more time that'll have to be spent on snow plowing for this for this block or two.
So we should probably flag this area for plowing when they, so they know where the curb is for the first couple of snows, snowfalls?
Mayor and council member, not a bad suggestion, honestly.
All right. And the second question I had, Mayor, was?
Follow up?
Yeah, I had another, lost train, my my train of thought on the second question. I'll have to come back if it comes back to me.
All right. Thank you. Other of staff, Councilor Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of questions. Excuse me, Ryan, if you could put up the slide of the streets with Scott Street, please. But I do want to say first off that I do appreciate all the extra parking that's going into the thoughts on Levy Drive and Councilman does bring up some good points about those plowing routes. I I think with a restaurant busy down there, maybe we'll end up talking about parking restrictions at some point too, but that's a good problem. And I do like the alley between Atwood and Fuller and the fact that we're not assessing that portion that's basically on the city parking lot, so that's good. But my questions on the Scott Street portion is, are we assessing the auto shop and the laundromat building? I mean, we're adding parking for them and that's basically their entrance.
Ryan?
So Mayor and council members, this project does not assess this portion of the project. That is kind of follows the other portion, but with that said, no assessments are proposed with the River Bluff development and the reconstruction of these three blocks of streets. And the reason for that is this is kind of similar to what we've done at Canterbury with 12th Avenue unbridled, some of those roadways. We are also, this next year, we're going to be reconstructing a small portion of 12th Avenue east of County Road 83 and those roadway improvements are being paid for out of the TIF. So this particular block, the developer is actually contributing his 15%. So the developer is actually going to pay for his portion of the assessments for his half of the road adjacent to his project and that is in that developer's agreement. The outer half where those streets are adjacent to the apartment, there's a residential property on Atwood Street on the east side, correct? There's the auto body shop and others on the west there. Those are not proposed to be assessed, that that small portion of the assessments would actually be picked up by the TIF.
If I could follow up, Mr. Mayor, please?
Yes, go ahead.
Another one that came up in that same area, you talked about the the security lighting along the trail and I just want to make sure that we're adding enough security lighting for safety down there with along the river and things like that. Has that been assessed?
Mayor and council members, thank you. The street lighting, the feasibility report does show a map. I apologize, I don't have that here. We are looking at adding lighting. There's currently a street light at Fuller Street and the intersection of Levy Drive. We are looking at adding additional lighting along those parking stalls. So I think we added two or three lights along those parking stalls. And then with that said, as you move to that west block where the River Bluff department development is, that entire block will be encircled. It'll be alternating trees and streetlights at 50 foot intervals. So that entire block will be encompassed by similar lights to the downtown area. The street lighting for our portion of the project right now is more of the residential style and being that, you know, you've got the apartment buildings and the park, it doesn't have the same feel as that downtown there. So we weren't actually recommending to change out the lighting in that area. They're all already upgraded to LEDs and the light poles are in good standard, but we are going to add a couple of lights to help with parking and trail visibility, correct?
Okay, thank you. And and a couple more. It also has a bus stop in that area and I and I think that would probably, I'm assuming is going to be part of that project as you were talking about, correct?
Will analyze that and anywhere it's necessary for that River Bluff, it would be added to that portion, correct?
Great, thanks. And then the last thing I has on the other side of Scott Street on the south side, I didn't catch and I just picked up on it tonight on the curb and gutter on Scott Street on on the railroad side. Yeah, okay, this is just weird. Now, a couple of questions here. Are we doing curb and gutter on both sides?
Yes, Mayor and council members, curb and gutter on both sides of the roadway here.
Okay, now tell me, we're only doing sanitary sewer halfway. Is the depot and the insurance agency, do they have a sanitary sewer?
Mayor and council member, those two properties do indeed have sanitary sewer. They actually have private services that run under the railroad tracks and to Second Avenue.
Okay, that was just curious on what was happening down there. We've had some concerns.
Yeah, the, to the best of my knowledge, the mill building in the middle of the block there does not, the old feed mill does not have sewer and or it's connected to the property to the west of here and it's not serviced by this portion of the block. And then the the existing 60 feet of sanitary sewer serves Bob's Landscaping on the west side, top of the page there, and the residential property has sanitary sewer that runs out to First Avenue.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Back to Councilor Lehman.
Thank you, Mayor. I remember my my questions. The the, I want to make sure I'm understanding the city assessment on a city frontage. It's not that we're not assessing it to ourselves, but we're also not taking the dollar amount that the assessment would be and placing it onto other properties. We're paying that assessment out of the capital improvement fund. Is that correct?
Mayor and council members, you did get that correct. We are not, the the amount for the portion of the assess, the the assessable amount of that street, so the half adjacent to the city lots, those are being paid directly out of the capital improvement fund. So a hundred percent of that half of the roadway is paid out of capital improvement fund.
Yeah, I just wanted to make that clear for the the citizens out there so that they're not thinking that they're picking up the city's portion.
No, and similarly, you know, we talked about Levy Drive, the north half, the Batuminus Trail on that side of the road. And then again, all those extra widths, like the parking stalls, anything over thirty-seven feet wide is not assessed. That comes out of the capital improvement fund and not being divided out by these residents.
And I guess for me to clarify a little bit more in detail, yes, all of us as taxpayers throughout the community are paying for those assessments in our our CIF fund, but the the properties in this project itself are not paying the additional thirty percent. Okay, the last question I had, Mayor, was a comment when Scott Street on the south side is being reconstructed and boring underneath the railroad track. Perfect opportunity for the railroad to take a look at that crossing and see if it needs any improvement.
Mayor and council members duly noted. We're in that process of reaching out to the railroad, railroad for permitting to do this work. We will absolutely bring up the crossing. Specifically, the crossing, I think, one block west of here is in terrible shape and they have been made aware of that. As we do this project, the city is proposing this this pad where the actual rail is, is a concrete pad. And we will actually be replacing the on the north side right up to that pad. So we should be able to get a really nice seamless joint there and eliminate any problems on that on the north side. And then if we if we impact enough on the south side there, we can do our best to tie that in and and improve this crossing.
And that crossing may may be great right now and it might not need anything. I'm just thinking if there's no traffic going up and down across that crossing, if it does need any work, that would be a perfect opportunity for the railroad. So that was my comment, Mayor. Thank you.
No, and thank you, Counselor Lehman. I I think the one to the west, I think on Apghar is in more tough condition than than this one on Scott, but you're right, every opportunity that we can partner and get the railroad to improve some of these grades, I think the better. Thanks for that. I had a question back trying to loop around on the street lighting. And I just want to make sure that for the block of the new apartment building that we have a lot of a diagonal parking there next that will be used for the restaurant. It'll also be used for, you know, on the kind of the new trailhead there access where we typically haven't had a lot of parking. Critical that we have some street lighting on that side of the street. I know that the apartment building will take care of theirs on their, within their block there a little bit, but that was my concern. So great on that. Other questions of staff? Other questions of staff?
Most of my questions, I think, were were really asked already. I appreciate all the additional parking that's going to be added into this area. I do have concerns about the access into two hundred Levy Drive and I can't remember the name of the other apartment building during their construction and also parking during the construction on Scott for those businesses. But I think that you indicate that that will be covered in this normal process of doing business and and so I don't, I guess I don't have any questions.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, I can speak to that. Access is critical to all of these businesses and property owners and we do our best. The contract documents that we put forward specify that the project, the roadways need to be open from seven PM to seven AM every day. That typically lets those residential people get in and out. As well as that, we we do ask them to keep the roads in a in a condition that are passable, drivable. And we work with adjacent property owners. So where we know that we have parking issues, you know, like those two apartment buildings. You know, when we do the concrete alley, we'll still have access from one end, perhaps not the other at at that time. When we do the other one, we can do the alley half or the aprons half at a time so that we can still get vehicles in and out while allowing cure time on the concrete. So we make very reasonable accommodations to make sure that access is provided to all these businesses throughout our projects.
Great. Further questions of staff? Ryan, great job. Oh, Counselor Contreras?
Just really quick, Mayor, and I it's the long one here. Just, just Ryan, thank you for all the engagement you did. But I had a quick question. So on the resident information meeting that was held on February fourth, do we have any questions or concerns that were brought up?
So specifically, that meeting was low turnout sadly. The, we had one, the apartment property owner at two hundred Levy Drive that was in tenants and asked really good questions. And I would point out for anybody watching this tonight, the presentation was very similar to what you received as council members tonight. And that is available on the city's website as well as the city's YouTube page. So anybody can watch that at their convenience and then discuss with staff. The 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 property owner at that location voiced interest in working with him to eliminate the two concrete flumes or swales that come off of his property to the city's street. He was supportive of the alley reconstruction. He took pride in his building. He was the one that also brought up that he wants the the overhead electric that runs in that alley to be undergrounded. So that was largely the feedback that was received from that meeting. Now, with that said, staff, myself particularly, when we had a preliminary design, also went and did site visits to the to the property owners that were impacted along Scott Street specifically. Just because of the nature, we're proposing something entirely new with parking and how that would affect those businesses. Before we got to this point with you guys, we wanted to ensure that we had their voices considered and and recommended something that made sense. So I've spoken with all those property owners. Of course, everybody's concerned about the assessment value that always comes up, how that was calculated. The rail depot was very concerned about their parking. She she has a lot of quilting events and educational type events that have large attendants and that was very important to her. The other side of the street is an insurance agent. He's got his whole property is paved and so he's a little bit concerned. We are looking to limit his access to a narrower passage in that area. So we'll work with him to make sure that we meet his needs and that he can still use his parking lot as necessary. The landscape company was good with it. I spoke in detail with the residential property owner on Scott Street. Generally good with it, concerned about the amount of the assessment. We talked about where his sewer went, just to make sure that he understood all of that. There are two two large ash trees on the side that may or may not be impacted by our parking. That was a concern, but not a make it or break it for him. And then we did get some survey results back. So we also mail out a questionnaire, just, you know, how's your sewer working? Do you have any issues? You have sump pumps? Where do those drain kind of questions? That survey as well as the results are tabulated for council and for the public in the back of the amended feasibility report as well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor. And Ryan, again, further questions of staff? Seeing none, then we would ask that this is a public hearing. And any resident or like to come forward and make comment on this, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
And what we'll do, ladies and gentlemen, is as you come up, you can have a seat right here at the table. Give your name and address and then ask your questions of council and please bear with us in these times. We'll try to switch back and forth with the diagrams. If you'd like to have the diagram up to talk as well and you'll be able to see them right up there.
Thank you. Hey, I am Nicole Castern and I live at three, three, six, First Avenue West, the only residence on this. You spoke to my husband, Ryan, today. And those trees are a huge concern. That is a make it or break it. We do not want, that is solar heat gain. That's on the west side and the south side of our property. So that would be a huge issue to me. I don't know why you'd want to remove them. I don't see any landscape plants. You guys are actually putting any kind of new trees landscaping in the area to help any kind of heat island effect or heat gain, anything like that. We're just going to be paved. So to me, that's a huge problem. It's great that we are doing improvements, like we do welcome the apartment complex going up across the street and the restaurant. We love it. We love Shakopee. We love all the things coming and happening, but we also don't want to strip down the history. I mean, we live in a historic home, beautiful home, built by the people who started a great business here, the Rock Springs Bottling Company, you know, like there's history. Those trees are just as old as the house. So I understand we have this new development going across the street, but it also looks like the curb that you're putting out by the stop sign on First and Scott and you're pulling that curb out and pulling that parking back, which we already have room for, because forty-six feet is plenty wide for that and parking in two lanes. It it seems like you're trying to line that up and give them across the street overflow in front of our house for the apartments rather than take our house and property in consideration first. You know, they have plenty. So to me, that is a, it's a huge issue. That's my concern with it. And that's it. I'm sure my husband will come up and speak.
Well, you're, thank you very much and those are valued concerns. And Ryan, do you want to speak? I think the idea on the trees was not to take them out, but see how they're going to be impacted. You know, big trees like that are important. Ryan?
Mayor and council, thank you and and good comments from the resident there. The two ash trees, I didn't have a specific answer. We'll take a look as staff tomorrow, you know, as early as tomorrow, I can look and see what I would suggest is that the old street was very wide, forty-five, forty-seven, whatever it was, feet wide. We're actually pulling that in and narrowing the street in this location. By doing that, it's very possible that that curb line ends up even with the parking lane about where it was prior to this. So then it might just be fitting that sidewalk in and whether that fits. There's only maybe three or four parking spots in this location. You know, if if council chose, we could certainly eliminate the the parallel parking in that location. It it wasn't added necessarily to support. It was more of the the flavor of the neighborhood, the parking for some of the other adjacent buildings, right, and and business owners collectively. And the one, you know, the one comment and and I know I don't want to downplay the significance of it. I love my trees and I don't cut down trees that I don't need to. And that that's pretty standard through most of these projects. They are ash trees, is my understanding as well, and we're currently treating those. I would say ash borer will never go away and that is something that we'll always be maintaining and may, even with treatment, those trees are still susceptible to death via beetle. So you know, and then it what's not addressed in what you're seeing in front of you is that you've got a general layout for this project. It doesn't include every little detail. So tree replacement is very common when we remove trees in projects. We backfill trees in our boulevards as well. So, you know, alternatively, if we do need to remove some trees, we can certainly work with the property owner to get some trees back in that area.
Right. Great comment, great concerns. Is there any other, yes, go ahead.
Hi, this is Steve Littlehog, the city engineer. I've been looking at those trees. We we should stop talking about removing them. We'll preserve them. They are trees that we can absolutely preserve. We'll make adjustments in the road and curb and gutter to make sure that we don't impact them. So rest assured, tonight, we we will not be impacting those two trees.
There you go.
Great. Counselor Lehman?
But understand that if the ash borer gets the trees, that's out of our control, but but we will keep them, correct?
Correct, Mayor and Council. Any trees that are currently on our treatment program are currently slated unless council chooses to change our EAB policy that we would continue to treat them at this time.
Okay.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Would anybody else like to come forward? Make comment on this project? Please state your name and address for the record and welcome.
Hi, this is Chris Castern, three, three, six, First Avenue West. Ryan, we spoke earlier today, had a good conversation. Again, yeah, we'd like to leave those trees, you know, definitely if you plant a new tree, the canopy takes a little bit to actually provide shade. So we'd appreciate if we could keep them and it sounds like you guys are going to do that or at least try to. So we appreciate that. So I guess my only kind of argument to this whole development part. You know, there's quite a bit of development on the other side of this, the First Avenue, you know, for the the new development for the river. But I mean, there's a lot more going on as far as improvements over there. So is the, is it going to be like based on just the linear footage of your frontage? That's going to be divided by the cost? Because I mean, honestly, you know, just one of you guys just improved to the south here, you know, you just got your normal road. But now I'm going to have to try to pay for kind of above and beyond on the other side. So I just want to make sure you know, how that, you know, is that really fair? I understand you guys are giving us a better, you know, because we're we're only getting charged for sixty foot, but also you know, what if there's, if it would have been just a standard improvement based on how they're doing to this, you know, what you guys just improved to the cell on Scott Street. So I'm just, I guess that's my kind of only argument for that.
Chris, thank you. Great, great question, Ryan.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, on that, the improvements to Scott Street from First to Levy Drive, Levy Drive from Scott to Atwood and Atwood from First to Levy Drive that surround the River Bluff Apartments are not being constructed with this project or this improvement hearing. No elements of that infrastructure is proposed to be assessed with this project. So this project is the block of Scott, south of First Avenue, as well as Levy Drive from Atwood heading east down to Home Street approximately, as well as the block of Fuller. Those assessments are all calculated together because of the similar nature of these road widths and neighborhood and the use of the the different properties in this area. However, the the infrastructure improvements for that apartment are not assessed. And then my other point that I would make is that similar to a residential street in the middle of the countryside neighborhood or in front of Counselor Whiting or Lehman's houses on, you know, their streets, they're approximately thirty-seven feet wide. And that is what the assessment basis is. So any extra width or extraordinary parking areas, et cetera, are not being directly assessed. They are eliminated from the calculations and they are not being assessed to these property owners in this area. That comes directly out of that capital improvement fund as discussed. I hope that helps clarify.
Ryan, this is Chris again. Thanks for clarifying that. I thought it was across around the new complex. So thanks for, I think the printout that was given, that was mailed out, I guess it didn't really address, you know, the rest of that area.
Thank you for your conversation and feedback today. Appreciate it.
Follow up, Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, just to throw out there a comparison, roughly eleven, eleven years ago, when my street was done in front of my house, my assessment at that time was four thousand, maybe just a little bit more. Counselor Whiting's was done after my project. I'm not, I don't recall what his was. But eleven years ago, it was over four thousand for a sixty foot wide lot here. So we're not too far off considering the the cost increases over more than a decade.
Chris, does that help alleviate some of your concerns in that regard?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, thank you very much. Just wanted a little more clarification. Appreciate it. Thanks, you guys.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody else like to come forward and make comment on this project? Please state your name and address for the record.
This is the opportunity that if anybody has any comments at all for city council, please go ahead and step up and have a seat and ask any questions.
Mayor and council, this is Ryan again. Just a quick calculation, if you take Counselor Lehman's fourth, roughly four thousand dollar assessment and do three percent over ten years, you'd be sitting at fifty-four, fifty-five hundred dollars at least right now. and do three percent over ten years, you'd be sitting at fifty-four, fifty-five hundred dollars at least right now. Uh, just for comparison's sake. And I would say that, uh, you know, when we give you these estimates, we're, we're, uh, trying to be right in the ballpark. But without, um, being the low bidder on this, it's certainly easier to come back to council and to the residents and say, surprise, your bill isn't six thousand dollars, it's fifty-five hundred dollars. So, um, we're cautiously optimistic that we've done a good job in, in being conservative but realistic in our estimates.
I think my interest was higher than what's proposed in this project also.
And Ryan, you, uh, this is a public hearing.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor, Ryan makes a good point.
Yeah.
Uh, these are just estimates. The, the actual costs are what you will ultimately be assessed.
Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I do have a, a question, uh, now that Mr. Reynolds makes that comment. Hypothetically, and correct me if I'm wrong, staff, but if these estimates, uh, come back twice as much, we have the, we do reserve the right as a council to say, okay, stop, hold on, we're going to take another look at this, right?
At the bidding.
Mayor and Council, that is correct. We bring back, uh, bid awards, uh, because the city staff does not have the spending authority for this kind of money. Uh, we have to allow council to make those decisions. So, uh, the bid results will be tabulated, will be brought back to you for future consideration and/or rejection if, if they're out of line.
Yeah. Great. Uh, this is a public hearing. Uh, I'm sensing no one else in the public is coming forward to the table. Uh, have we written, uh, received any, uh, electronic communication, Mr. Reynolds?
No, sir, not other than what, uh, Mr. Halverson has already commented on.
Okay. Uh, last call, this is a public hearing. Uh, if anybody wants to come forward, make comment in regard to this. Otherwise, seeing none, uh, Counselor Brennan?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing by Counselor Contreras. Uh, further discussion, discussion, discussion by voice vote, Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Brennan?
Aye.
Counselor Whiting?
Aye.
Counselor Contreras?
Aye.
Counselor Lehman?
Aye.
Mayor Mars?
Aye. That motion passes to close the public hearing. Uh, counselors, however we like to proceed, Counselor Whiting?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I do want to add, uh, that, yeah, it doesn't seem like the assessment's gone up in the past few years. And, uh, although there, you mentioned some project inconveniences, uh, um, I think it'll give the residences, uh, at Levy Drive, something to talk about and keep them busy for a while. So, uh, with that, I would offer up to adopt resolution R twenty-two-one dash zero-two-zero ordering improvements and preparations of plans and specifications for the twenty-two-one Street and Utility Reconstruction Project CIF twenty-one dash zero-zero-seven and move its adoption.
Uh, Counsel Whiting, thank you very much. I have a second by Counsel Brennan. Further discussion, further discussion. Counselor, uh, Lehman?
This is the only way to find out how accurate our estimates are.
And there will be another stop point here, opportunity at least. But, uh, I do know that some of this levy drive was in our CIP and, um, scheduled to get done. That's been a tough road and, uh, so, but, uh, uh, we're going to see where we go from here. Further discussion, discussion on the motion, seeing none by voice vote, Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Brennan?
Aye.
Counselor Whiting?
Aye.
Counselor Contreras?
Aye.
Counselor Lehman?
Aye.
Mayor Mars?
Aye. That motion passes. Thank you very much. Let's move ahead then to seven B, a public hearing for a vacation draisement of a utility easement rejoining and preliminary plat of whispering waters and Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I make a motion to open a public hearing.
Thank you. Counselor Contreras, a second, further discussion, further discussion, discussion by voice vote to open the public hearing, Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Brennan? Counselor Whiting?
Aye.
Counselor Contreras?
Aye.
Counselor Lehman?
Aye.
Mayor Mars?
Aye. The public hearing is now open and I apologize, I'm not, is Kyle presenting or?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Just give us a second, please.
Okay, not a problem.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Uh, before you this evening for your consideration is the proposed, uh, vacation of drainage and utility easements, uh, rezoning of property from agricultural preservation and rural residential to R-one-B, uh, urban residential zone and the proposed preliminary plat of whispering waters. The properties are on Eagle Creek Boulevard and Pike Lake Road. So you can see the, this is an aerial photo of the area. The subject property is highlighted in red. Uh, Eagle Creek Boulevard is on the north side of the property. The city of Prior Lake is on the south side of the property. Pike Lake Road is on the west. Uh, that is Eagle Creek Elementary School that you see to the west side of Pike Lake Road. And then, uh, Horizon Heights is to the east, an existing rural residential subdivision. So in some details on the proposed project is the applicant is KRB Development Eight LLC. Uh, who the applicant is here this evening for any questions. The current owners are Stephen and Kathleen Mullenhart Trust and Bradley Gagne. As I mentioned, uh, at the beginning of the presentation, the zoning, current zoning is agricultural preservation and rural residential. The proposed zoning is R-one-B urban residential. And the adjacent zoning is rural residential or the city of Prior Lake. The twenty-forty comp plan guides this site for suburban residential development, which is three to six units per acre. And the site area is fifty-eight point nine-three acres. So the requests that are under review, uh, before you this evening is rezoning of properties from agricultural and rural residential to R-one-B, the vacation of drainage and utility easements, which is the public hearing that you just opened, and the preliminary plat of a hundred and thirty-four single-family residential lots. So some additional details are there's the proposed a hundred and thirty-four single-family residential lots. The typical lot size that the applicant is proposing is sixty-five feet by a hundred and thirty. Many of the lots are larger than seventy-five by a hundred and thirty feet. They're in the shoreline overlay zone, which requires the, requires lots to be larger in size and have a reduced amount of hard surface on the lot. The shoreline overlay zone is because of the proximity to the Prior Lake Outlet Channel. So the applicant is, uh, working with a couple of different, uh, home builders. So there would be three builders that would be proposed at this time, be Keyland Homes, Brandle Anderson and One Ten Ten Construction. Uh, the trail along the Prior Lake Outlet Channel would connect to the existing trail along Eagle Creek Boulevard, and there would be sidewalks on one side of all the streets in the proposed neighborhood. The proposed density is three point oh eight units per acre, which is just above the minimum density of three point oh units per acre, which is governed by the comp plan and the Met Council. So earlier this month, the Board of Adjustment and Appeals approved a lot width and impervious surface percentage variance request for two specific lots in the subdivision, uh, because only a small portion of their, of those particular lots are actually, actually fell in the shoreline overlay. Uh, so there were, the board approved that variance request. So the applicant is proposing, I've got some plans we'll be showing on, uh, future slides here. But the future, the street connections would be to the existing stubs to this site on Twentieth Avenue, Twenty-Second Avenue and the frontage on Pike Lake Road. Uh, the traffic impact study was, uh, traffic impact study was performed by the applicant's, uh, traffic engineer. All of the nearby intersections would continue to operate at a level of service A, which is, uh, no waiting or waiting of less than ten seconds for vehicles that are queued, uh, at the intersection. And, uh, as part of the traffic study, uh, stop conditions are recommended for Twentieth and Twenty-Second Avenue at Foot, at Foothill Trail and Twenty-Second Avenue at Pike Lake Road, uh, which would, are the new intersections. You'll note, uh, there was, uh, an error in the staff report where there was a sentence that was, uh, cut off abruptly. Uh, that's, uh, in the report. The sentence should have said, uh, referred to the traffics, traffic's impact study recommending stop conditions for what I just said on Twentieth, Twenty-Second and, uh, at Pike Lake Road. So that's a correction for the report. The outlots along the Prior Lake Outlet Channel would be owned by the city of Shakopee. So this is the current zoning of the property and the, and the surrounding areas, the property, the site is highlighted in orange. The green properties are currently zoned agricultural preservation. Uh, the white properties are zoned rural residential, all of the yellow properties that you see in the area. Uh, the darker yellow is R-one-B, which is the Ridge Creek Development and Riverside Bluffs and Dakota, uh, Dakota Crossing. And then to the east, the lighter yellow is Dakota Highlands, that is R-one-A zone. The Eagle Creek Elementary School is zoned R-one-B. This is the comp plan for the area. Uh, the site is highlighted in, uh, highlighted in red. Uh, the area is guided for suburban residential as a, as are the surrounding areas to this site. And the proposed density is, uh, complies with the comp plan requirements. This is a plan showing the proposed easement vacation areas. The proposed, uh, vacation areas are highlighted in red. Uh, the easement over the Prior Lake Outlet Channel, the applicant originally had applied to vacate, uh, portions of the easement over the Prior Lake Outlet Channel. Uh, but with, uh, through staff review, we, we've determined that we do not want to vacate those portions of the, of the easement. Uh, there will also be additional easements over the channel that will be dedicated as part of this plat. The, uh, proposed easements to be vacated are just perimeter easements on lots in Meadowbrook Run. The larger, larger portion that cuts through Lot One Block One on the southern side, uh, that's the wider easement. That was for a future water main, uh, that was dedicated back in nineteen eighty-eight. Uh, there is, when there was unknown when this area would be served by city sewer and water. And because of the, this proposed development that easement's no longer needed, the water service won't be coming from that area. Staff recommends approval of the ease, of the easement vacation request. Uh, so that's, uh, that's just subject for the resolution that's attached to the report. This is the proposed preliminary plat drawing for the area. You can see the proposed connections of Twentieth Avenue, which i- into Horizon Heights and also Twenty-Second Avenue on the east side. Those are existing street stubs that are there. And then Twenty-Second Avenue would be extended to the west, out to Pike Lake Road. Uh, so the western side, the western, uh, street intersection on the site is Pike Lake Road. The applicant's proposing to have two box culverts, uh, for crossing the Prior Lake Outlet Channel. Uh, one is on the north side of the site, the other is on the south side closer to Pike Lake Road. Uh, there are no cul-de-sacs that are proposed as part of this development or even temporary cul-de-sacs. On the northwest side of the site, uh, there is a proposed driveway to connect the two dead ends. Uh, so instead of having temporary cul-de-sacs in someone's, uh, in somebody's front yard and having to hop over the curb to get over that, um, there's just a, a narrow driveway connecting those two streets. You can see the, uh, could you go back a slide, Michael? There, there's a, you can see lines that run through the project. There's a gray line that's following, that denotes the shoreline overlay zone. Those are for lots that are within three hundred feet of the Prior Lake Outlet Channel. So you can see that those lots, uh, the lots that are within the shoreline overlay are wider lots than the other lots. That's a requirement in the shoreline's regulations that the minimum lot width be seventy-five feet. Many of those lots are eighty feet or wider, some of them even being ninety feet wide. And go to the next slide. This is the proposed grading plan for the site. You can see there's a few ponds or stormwater basins that are proposed adjacent to the channel. Uh, that's, this is the grading plan that shows the proposed ponds. There's five. Uh, you can see the four relative, that are relatively prominent. They're on the north side of the site. And there's a small one on the southwest side, just, uh, just south of Twenty-Second Avenue near where the channel goes into Prior Lake is the smallest. That's the fifth one. And there's a sidewalk that's proposed, uh, on one side of all of the streets. So in the, uh, in the report, there's a mention about the, uh, proposed trail alignment. And at the planning commission meeting, there was concerns by a planning commissioner about the alignment for the proposed trail, uh, for connecting to, uh, the existing trail along Eagle Creek Boulevard. The applicant's provider, provided a revised alignment, uh, that was provided after the report went to, uh, went to publication. Uh, but the staff is pleased with this alignment. We're working with Scott County Highway Department on this proposed alignment. This is the northeast portion of the site. Uh, we want to have a, uh, less circuitous, uh, circuitous route, uh, through the site for the trail along Eagle Creek Boulevard. You'll recall a few years ago, the, uh, Prior Lake Outlet Channel actually washed out Eagle Creek Boulevard in this area. And, uh, because of the, uh, turn of the outlet channel and the length of the existing box culvert, it makes it very challenging to run the trail along the, along the roadway. So the applicant has routed the trail through the site, uh, and this is the proposed alignment, um, that, uh, we're working with Scott County and engineering staff on, uh, coming to a final alignment. But this is the applicant's proposal. We did receive comments late today that the county or that the standard, that this currently does not meet the standard because of the rural, rural section, uh, rural section roadway. Uh, so we're going to be looking for a few different options of making this work with the separation from the roadway because there's not a curb there, uh, whether it be, uh, curbing or guard rail. But, uh, there's a draft condition in the res, plat resolution that the applicant would work with, uh, county staff and city staff to come up with an agreement or an alignment that's, uh, agreeable to all parties. And the applicant has been, uh, has been good to work with on providing this, uh, proposed alignment. This is the proposed landscape plan. Uh, the applicant, uh, has been working to add a significant number of trees on the site. They're looking to add landscaping along the trail, uh, on both sides and also as screening along Eagle Creek Boulevard. Uh, they're looking to, we're going to be looking for a few more trees to be added to meet the replacement requirement for the trees that are removed, but they're getting very close. Uh, we've worked with the applicant to move some of the plantings out of the center point easement on the east side of the, uh, east side of the site. Uh, but you'll see the boulevard, there are boulevard trees that are proposed, uh, along the streets. And then, uh, as I mentioned, there would be trees along the trail, along the channel. The applicant has provided some sample, uh, house elevations, uh, that would be proposed to be constructed in this area. This is not a PUD, but the applicant has provided these as a reference of some houses that would be, uh, built in the neighborhood. Uh, and the applicant was provided with the single-family home design guidelines. And, uh, appears that all of these houses do meet the single-family ho- uh, home design guidelines. So the recommendation, uh, is for the council to approve the rezoning from agricultural preservation and rural residential to R-one-B urban residential. The planning commission recommended approve, the city council approved that request by a vote of six to zero. Uh, we're also recommending that the city council approve the proposed vacation of easements. Uh, the planning commission approved, recommended approval by a vote of six to zero. And we're also recommending approval of the preliminary plat. The recommendation at the planning commission was a vote of five to one with the one commissioner, uh, dissenting because of the alignment. Um, at that time, that forced, uh, bicycles and pedestrians to go onto Foothill Trail to get back to Eagle Creek Boulevard. So with the revised alignment going around, closer to Eagle Creek Boulevard, that, that commissioner's concerns would be alleviated. So before you this evening is three action items, so that would require three votes. Uh, with that, I will turn it to the, turn it over to the council for any questions.
Kyle, thank you very much for your presentation and, uh, overview of this, uh, this proposed development. Um, for council, when we get there for these motions, we will take them all individually, uh, when we get there. But questions of staff, Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, thank you. I got a couple of questions for Mr. Saboda. Um, the, the properties that are right along the, um, Prior Lake, uh, waterway, um, are we going to grade them properties where their backyards are up to that, uh, waterway that if it overflows and starts onto their property, that it's like, got to go uphill? I'm looking at one oh three and one oh four, them two properties are right on the corner, the outlet channel. And I don't know how the grading on them properties are, but if there's a overspill in that. in that outlet channel onto them properties, I hope it isn't downhill toward the house.
Mayor Mars, Councilor Lehman, it is not downhill towards the house. There are requirements for elevation change for freeboard, for the lowest, low floor elevation of those, of those housing, of the basements of those units. So no, it would not be sloped towards the, towards the house.
Okay. So you're already thinking ahead of me on that. Very good. Thank you. And then the second question, Mayor, was the, the roads on the northwest, where they've got the 20-foot emergency, what do you call it there, emergency turnaround? Are down roads intended to continue to the west and eventually link up with Pike Lake?
Mayor Mars, Councilor Lehman, yes, those, those roadways are currently stubbed. There's an adjacent rural residential, a large rural residential lot there. At the time that the properties to the west of this would develop, the, those streets would be extended and would potentially connect to Pike Lake Road. Again, that's going to be based on what happens in the future, but certainly is there, there is that capability. So this is the, the west side. You can see the rural residential lot that accesses off of Eagle Creek Boulevard. There's, both of those street stubs go to that property.
Okay.
That property owner, it should be, it should be noted, that property owner did come to the planning commission meeting and did not voice any concerns about that.
Okay.
I'm going to follow up on Councilor Lehman's question on that little driveway to connect those two streets. Yes, indeed, if those streets go to the west and connect in that future development at that time, what would happen with that little north-south side driveway? It wouldn't align with any street that would go north and south.
It would be removed.
And then probably a vacation then, if that were the right norm. I mean, I'm kind of looking at what would have, you said it would go away. To me, it would be a future vacation and then those two homeowners would gain some, some bigger yards, correct?
Mayor Mars, members of council, that is correct. That easement could be, would be vacated at that time. And the pavement would be removed and then it would be restored to grass. And that would be done when the property to the west develops.
Got it. Um, thank you. Other questions of staff? Other questions of staff? Councilor Brennan?
On that same driveway, is that maintained by the city? Implored by the city?
Mayor Mars, Councilor Brennan, yes, that would be something that would get plowed for emergency services. That's the, that would function as the snowplow turnaround and for fire trucks.
Okay. I like the fact that there's not cul-de-sacs in this area. And I, I like the, I like the fact that the developers are now looking at lowering the number of cul-de-sacs. And so I, I like that.
Other questions of staff?
Mayor?
Councilor Lehman?
If I could just comment, I really like the differences in the housing options that were shown on the slides. It looks good. They're, they're, they're not, the monotony is not there. So appreciated from the developer.
Good. Excellent. I have a couple of questions, I guess. One of my biggest questions was going to be on the trail, how that goes along Eagle Creek. Concerned that it was too close. Now they've backed it off and, and I'm all for that, but there's still some concerns and I, public safety. We don't want to encourage any crossing of Eagle Creek from that trail. We want them to follow the, the proper, the proper action, which I think is to the east at Foothill Trail. I think it's fantastic that they're going to have a trail along the Pike Lake Outlet Channel. And that'll tie in down the line greatly with what we're doing in Ridge Creek. My question on ponding, we're working to little bit hold back the Prior Lake Outlet Channel and try to get some, a little more stabilization rather than flow. Are these ponds, I know these ponds in this development are for, you know, the impervious surface in that development. But will they serve a dual purpose at all in regard to the outlet channel, Kyle?
Mayor Mars, members of council, the restrictions on the Prior Lake Outlet Channel are quite strict on the discharge of stormwater to the channel. And so it's a very limited amount, and that's why some of those ponds, ponds are there, or the number of ponds would be to control the rate of discharge to the outlet channel. So it's.
So it doesn't keep adding to the flow?
Correct.
Right. And then obviously there's no direct access off of Eagle Creek. It's all off of Foothill Trail and those two, two streets moving east to west, right?
Mayor Mars, members of council, that's correct. The accesses would come from Foothill Trail and Pike Lake Road on the west side.
Right. Further questions of staff? Further, Councilor Contreras?
Thank you. Kyle, just a quick, I just wanted to know if I heard right. So there will be sidewalks on one side of, of the streets?
Mayor Mars, Councilor Contreras, that's correct. There would be a sidewalk on one side of all of the new streets.
Perfect. And one last question. I know it's way too early to know, but do we have a price range of what these homes will be at, or is it just too early to say?
Mayor Mars, Councilor Contreras, the applicant is here this evening. They'd be able to speak to that, but at the, I believe what they mentioned at the planning commission meeting was from the 400s and to 600 plus.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Further questions of staff? Further questions of staff? Seeing none then. This is a public hearing. And if there would be a resident citizen that would like to come forward, or actually before that, we would, does the applicant or the developer, KRB, like to come forward and make comment in regard to this application? And if so, please state your name and address for the record and welcome.
My name is Rod Just. I'm with KRB Development and also Keyland Homes. Some of the pictures that we shared with you on the thing is actually just renditions of the homes that we build. There's still going to be two other builders. So there's going to be quite a variety in the style of homes going into the neighborhood beyond what we've, we've shared with you. As far as the pricing, we, we feel, like Kyle said, I think we're going to be in the 450s to probably 650 and could even push over 700 on some of these, especially backing up to the outlet channel. So.
That's a, that's a strong amenity.
Yep, it is. Yeah, we're excited to be there.
Do you think, other questions of the developer? Questions of the developer? Thanks, Rod, if you have no further comments. Thank you. Again, this is a public hearing. Would any resident like to come forward and make comment in regard to this application? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
I'm Gary Horky, part of the Keyland Development. And.
Welcome.
I'm very excited to come into this development and do a job for the people of Chautauqua.
Good. Any other comments? Questions, councilors? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record and welcome. Seeing none. Councilor Lehman?
Mayor, make a motion to close the public hearing.
Waiting second. I guess I apologize. Mr. Reynolds, are we seeing, did we receive any electronic comments in regard to this proposal, application?
Nothing other than what's in the packet, sir.
Mr. Reynolds, thank you very much. I have a motion on the table to close the public hearing. And a second, further discussion, discussion, discussion by voice vote, Mr. Reynolds?
Councilor Brennan?
Aye.
Councilor Whiting?
Aye.
Councilor Contreras?
Aye.
Councilor Lehman?
Aye.
Councilor, excuse me, Mayor Mars?
Aye. Public hearing is now closed. Proceeding to the motions again. If we have council members that want to move motions, let's move them individually, please. Councilor Brennan?
Mayor, I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number R2021-022, a resolution approving the vacation of certain drainage and utility easements in the Meadow Brook Run plat.
I have a motion and Councilor Lehman? I have a motion and a second by Councilor Lehman for approval, further discussion, discussion. Just, Councilor Lehman?
Mayor, I'm assuming that staff will get the necessary easements through the planning process along the drainage way and perimeter of the property.
Mayor Mars, Councilor Lehman, we, that's, that is a requirement, that's a condition of approval of the vacation. And the applicant is working with us on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions? Motion on the table? Further discussion, discussion, discussion by voice vote, Mr. Reynolds?
Councilor Whiting?
Aye.
Councilor Contreras?
Aye.
Councilor Lehman?
Aye.
Councilor Brennan?
Aye.
Mayor Mars?
Aye. That motion passes. Let's move forward here. Councilor Contreras?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number O2021-005, rezoning of properties from agricultural preservation and rural residential to urban residential.
Second?
I have a motion and a second by Councilor Brennan. Further discussion, discussion, discussion by voice vote, Mr. Reynolds?
Councilor Brennan?
Aye.
Councilor Contreras?
Aye.
Councilor Whiting?
Aye.
Councilor Lehman?
Aye.
Mayor Mars?
Aye. That rezoning, motion passes. Let's move forward here to the last one in regard to this project. Councilor Contreras?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number R2021-023, a resolution approving the preliminary plat of Whispering Waters.
Councilor Lehman? I have a motion and a second by Councilor Lehman to approving the preliminary plat of Whispering Waters. Further discussion, discussion, Councilor Lehman?
We're approving the preliminary plat with conditions, I assume.
Mayor Mars, Councilor Lehman, that's correct. There's several conditions and you will be seeing future final plats.
Okay. Thank you for that. Further discussion, discussion, discussion by voice vote, Mr. Reynolds?
Councilor Brennan?
Aye.
Councilor Contreras?
Aye.
Councilor Whiting?
Aye.
Councilor Lehman?
Aye.
Mayor Mars?
Aye. Thank you all very much. Now I'd entertain a motion to stand in recess for our Economic Development Authority meeting. Councilor Lehman?
Make a motion recess to the Economic Development Authority meeting.
Waiting second. I have a motion and a second by Councilor Whiting for their discussion, discussion, discussion by voice vote, Mr. Reynolds?
Councilor Brennan?
Aye.
Councilor Contreras?
Aye.
Councilor Whiting?
Aye.
Matt, Councilor Lehman?
Aye.
Mayor Mars?
Aye. That motion passes. We stand in adjournment to the EDA. Madam President, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I call to order the Economic Development Authority of Meeting of February 16, 2020, and it is 8:41 PM. And could you take the roll, roll, please? And number two is approval of the agenda. Is there any changes to the agenda?
No, ma'am.
Your Lehman?
Madam President, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second?
I have a motion by Lehman and second by Contreras to approve the agenda. Can I get a roll call, please?
Ms. Contreras?
Aye.
Mr. Lehman?
Aye.
Mr. Mars?
Aye.
Mr. Whiting?
Aye.
President Brennan?
Aye.
Number three is the consent business, and the consent business is the meetings of February 2nd. Mayor, Commissioner Mars?
Madam President, I'll offer the consent agenda of the EDA minutes for February 2nd, 2021.
Okay. Is there a second?
Waiting second.
There's been a motion to approve the consent business and a second by Whiting. Can I get a roll call, please?
Ms. Contreras?
Aye.
Mr. Lehman?
Aye.
Mr. Mars?
Aye.
Mr. Whiting?
Aye.
President Brennan?
Aye.
Number four A is a public hearing for the sale of property in Lincoln. Can I get a motion to open the public hearing? Councilor Contreras?
I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second by Mars? Can I get a roll call, please?
Ms. Contreras?
Aye.
Mr. Lehman?
Aye.
Mr. Mars?
Aye.
Mr. Whiting?
Aye.
President Brennan?
Aye. Motion passes, five to one. And we have Mr. Kurski presenting.
Thank you, Madam President. Tonight, as required by state statute, we are holding a public hearing for the sale of property owned by the EDA. This is the subject property between Taylor, Lincoln, and Verling. Again, to go over the history, last, the property is, is the last property owned by the EDA in the gateway. It was under contract. We received two proposals in January. Tonight, we're holding a public hearing for a sale at $626,000. We'll hold the public hearing tonight. After this, one of the motions to execute an agreement for $626,000. And then we will be doing a minor comp plan amendment at the planning commission and council in March. And then a rezoning to R3, to the planning commission and the council in April, and a close in mid 2021. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from Mr. Mars?
Madam, Madam President, just a qualified question that what's before us tonight is just an all-out, just the sale of the property. It doesn't include, like you mentioned on your last slide, anything to do with zoning and the future possible downzoning of this property, correct?
Madam President and board members, that's correct. Tonight is only a sale to the prospective purchaser, which is an affiliate of Triad Development. We had advertised that as required by law. So all you're doing tonight is to execute the purchase agreement, which also has a requirement that upon closure, they have one year per state statute to construct the property.
Follow-up question, Mr. President, or Madam President?
Yep.
And then the last people that held a position on this, the price was 500,000, and now that's been increased in this, this new bid for the, for a new developer. Is that correct?
Madam President and board members, that is correct.
Thank you very much, Madam President.
Is there any other questions?
Madam President, I just want to check with the city attorney. Do we open the public hearing yet? Are we, are we legal?
Yes, we did.
Thank you.
Yes, I, yes, I, I heard a motion.
Yes, I, yes, I, I heard a motion to open the public hearing, yes.
Okay, is there any other questions from any of the counselors? Um, this is a public hearing. I, I see that, um, Pride End is here. I don't know if they would like to speak, or if there's any members of the public available that would like to speak tonight.
Madam Chair and Board, we, there's no one from the public here, but the purchaser is online here if you have any questions.
Do, does anybody have any questions for Mr. O'Brien?
I'm just thrilled to be here in Shakopee with another project, so.
It's good to have you here.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I, no real questions. I, um, I think this is a good project for the area. Was looking forward to some, uh, affordable components to this, you know, that might still be out there in the future. But looking forward to another project with Mr. O'Brien. And if there's no other questions or anything, I could, uh, offer to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second? Mr. Mars?
Madam Chair, all second.
Uh, can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Lehman, did you have a comment, or?
I did. Um, I was gonna, my comment was that tonight's, as Mr. Mars pointed out, was just a sale of the property, and if there's specific questions about what the future development might be and what the council's looking for, the proper time for that would be at the next step of the process. That was my comment.
Thank you. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Contreras.
Aye.
Mr. Lehman.
Aye.
Mr. Mars.
Aye.
Mr. Whiting.
Aye.
President Brennan.
Aye. Um, the public hearing has been closed. Um, if anybody would like to make a motion on this? Mr. Mars?
Madam President, I'll offer a motion to approve Resolution Number E two zero two one dash zero zero one, approving the conveyance of certain real, real estate property to Trident Development LLC affiliated Old One Sixty-nine LLC.
Whiting, second. Oh, sorry.
There's been a motion and a second by Whiting to approve this resolution. Can I get a roll, or is there any questions? Or further comments? Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Contreras.
Aye.
Mr. Lehman.
Aye.
Mr. Mars.
Aye.
Mr. Whiting.
Aye.
President Brennan.
Aye. I want to thank Mr. O'Brien and Trident Development for their continued investment into our community.
Thank you.
Um, let's see, number five is reports. Um, it's reports. I'm not sure what reports is. Mr. Mars?
Madam President, I'll offer a motion to adjourn to March second, two thousand twenty-one at seven PM.
So, Mr. Lehman?
Aye.
There's been a motion and a second by Lehman. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, your reports usually is just the EDA's bill list for our perusal if we have any questions.
Okay, and I believe that was in our last, our last meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, can I get a roll call, please?
Ms. Contreras.
Aye.
Mr. Lehman.
Aye.
Mr. Mars.
Aye.
Mr. Whiting.
Aye.
President Brennan.
Aye. We stand in adjournment until, um, our next meeting on March second at eight fifty-one PM.
Thank you, Madam President. We are coming out of our EDA meeting and returning to the City of Shakopee City Council meeting for February sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one, and we are moving forward to number ten, ten A one, which is a preliminary plat for Jefferson Court. And Kyle, welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor Mars, members of council. Before you this evening, for your consideration is the preliminary plat of Jefferson Court. The property is near the corner of Tenth Avenue and Adams Street. We've got a map, uh, coming up here. So the subject property is highlighted in red. It is near the intersection of Adams Street and Tenth Avenue. Adams Street is on the east side of the site. Tenth Avenue is on the north side. Jefferson Street is on the west side of this, west side of the property, and, uh, the church is on the, New Creation Church is on the south side of this site. And Sweeney Elementary School is on the, across Adams Street. The applicant is Link Construction. The current owner is Rachel Welch. The zoning on the site is R one C, which is the traditional neighborhood district, and the twenty forty comp plan guides a site for Old Shakopee Neighborhood Development, which is three to twelve units per acre. The site area is two, just shy of two, two and a half acres. The applicant is proposing to create eight single-family lots on a cul-de-sac that would be accessed from the existing Jefferson Street. The homes would be built by Link Construction, and the density of the site is three point two two units per acre, with the minimum being three units per acre in the Old Shakopee Neighborhood Classification. This is the proposed plan for the, for the development. On the east side of the site, you can see there is a Center Point Energy Gas, uh, Gas Pipeline easement. That is fifty feet wide along the east side of the site, running along Adams Street. And Tenth Avenue is on the north side. There is a sidewalk along Tenth Avenue. Uh, on the west side, there's Jefferson Street. Well, staff is recommending the installation of a sidewalk with this development between the Tenth Avenue and the cul-de-sac of Jefferson Court. And you can see there's eight lots that are proposed to access the small cul-de-sac, and the infiltration, there's an infiltration basin on the south side of the site for stormwater mitigation purposes. This is the proposed landscape plan. The applicant has been working with Center Point Energy on what sort of plantings would be allowed in the gas pipeline easement along Adams Street. They're proposing some low-level shrubs and ornamental grasses, and Center Point has approved those plans. They're also looking at doing some evergreens along Tenth Avenue and some overstorey deciduous trees in the front yards and along Jefferson Street. Staff recommends that the city council approve the proposed preliminary plat. The Planning Commission reviewed the, this request earlier in the month, and they voted six zero to recommend city council approval of the preliminary plat. With that, I'll turn it over to the council for any questions.
Thank you, Kyle, for your presentation, a very unique, what I classify as a infill development. And, uh, further questions of staff? Counselor Lehman?
Two questions for you, Mayor. First is, what's the density across the street per acre?
Uh, Mayor Mars, Counselor Lehman, the areas around this area would be between three and four units per acre.
Okay, and the cul-de-sac, private or public?
It's a public street.
The cul-de-sac will be?
Correct. This would be very similar to the Link Development that's off of Veerling Drive down by Topa Park. The applicant's looking at the same style, kind of the same style of houses in, uh, that development's called South Parkview Fifth Edition. They're just wrapping up, uh, construction down there, uh, but it would be very similar in character to the cul-de-sac and the types of homes that would be there.
Okay.
I think I'm from, very familiar with, uh, the project off of Veerling. Um, boy, those are nice. I believe, single-family town hall, or, single-family town, homes, and, you know, they, they're building them as fast as they can. There's good layout, uh, really kind of good-looking area, and if that's the same style similar that they're bringing up here, that'd be great. Other questions of staff? Other questions of staff? Seeing none?
I don't have any questions.
I'm sorry, Counselor Brennan.
I don't have a question, but I, 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 I just think it's a great use of the land and something that I had never pictured coming into that area. So, you know, that's great that we have somebody that's interested in developing that.
Correct. I ask questions of staff for my agenda questions in regard to the pounding. No, no issues with the pounding for either safety around a school or a church, and then any impact, no impact on the, the gas line. Is that correct, Kyle?
Mayor Mars, members of the council, that's correct.
Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Brennan?
I would like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number R twenty-two-one dash zero one six, a resolution approving the preliminary plat of Jefferson Court.
Whiting, second.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Lehman, is that correct?
Counselor Whiting, second.
Okay, I apologize. Counselor Whiting is second, and I have a motion and a second. Further discussion, discussion, discussion by voice vote, Mr. Reynolds.
Counselor Contreras.
Aye.
Counselor Brennan.
Aye.
Counselor Whiting.
Aye.
Counselor Lehman.
Aye.
Mayor Mars.
Aye. That motion passes. Thank you very much. Um, much appreciated. Let's move ahead then. Item eleven A, which is the city bill list for our review. Further questions on that? Seeing none, then we would move to eleven B, eleven B one, our liaison administration report. Counselor Contreras.
Thank you, Mayor. Really quick for the, um, the school board. Today was the return for the hybrid, um, for our students, for secondary schools. Um, today was A day, and tomorrow will be B day, hoping everyone has had a, had a great day. Uh, for the SDA, it all continues with its mini-series for Black History Month, and today, while we were in our meeting, was the Schools to Prison Pipeline, and that was through Zoom, and it took place from, um, seven to eight, and that is it. Thank you so much.
Counselor Contreras, thank you very much. Counselor Brennan?
Um, I had, um, stuck meeting right before tonight's meeting here, um, and, um, they went through the timeline for, um, the proposed timeline for hiring the utilities manager, and actually, we changed the title of that to General Manager from Utilities Manager. Um, and the timeline proposed to have somebody hired is mid-May, um, so there's a lot of steps that are included in there, um, including a small break for Easter, um, and then also the onboarding of the two new commissioners as they, um, come on, because we'll be losing two commissioners, um, in the middle of this process. Um, and April nineteenth, um, we're expecting to have Minnesota Department of Health come to have, um, have a question and answer, um, evening on water quality. Um, so there will be more information on that, um, and I just want to let people know that in their bills, utility bills for February should be a survey for the water treatment, so people should, um, be watching for that and fill out the survey, um, and to discuss what they feel is important in their families for water quality, um, because we'll use that information in making a determinant of water treatment. Um, and we are, um, have three, um, interview, three companies that we'll be interviewing for, um, investment management, um, and I believe that will occur on Friday. And I think that's it. Is there any questions for me? Okay, that's all I have.
Counselor Brennan, thank you very much. Uh, Counselor Lehman?
One sixty-nine corridor coalition executive board met. It was basically housekeeping, setting future meeting dates, uh, guest speakers, all of them obviously aligned with one sixty-nine. That was pretty basic. Scale, a couple of updates from scale. We had a presentation by Scott County Health on the COVID, uh, situation update, um, roughly percentages of, of vaccinated and a rough percentage of those seeking vaccination, roughly fifty percent. Um, seems the one issue is getting the vaccination from the state, um, in quantities. I think it was fifty percent of frontline police fire type, uh, healthcare, uh, have been vaccinated. Um, we had a presentation by, forgot his name, I got it on my phone, uh, entity that bought Q logic building for a multi-purpose endeavor with Scott County as a participant's, uh, secondary education. The, uh, West End Mall currently is occupied by, uh, what's the name of that? It's a special needs type setting. They'll all kind of work out of that same building. It's much bigger than what they needed. Uh, they needed sixty-five thousand. That's a little over a hundred thousand square feet, so they got some room for expansion. They're kind of excited about that. A little frustrated with some of the issues with the Met Council, uh, charges, even though there's no increased usage. Uh, that was expressed. Um, another topic, uh, that was talked about in depth, uh, Leslie Vermillion, Scott County Administration, Lisa Freeze, Transportation, um, did an overview of the Scott County half a percent transit tax, transportation tax. Um, that's going to be sunsetting in twenty-two. I know I've brought that up to council before. They're going to be looking for the cities throughout the county and townships, uh, participation and, and support. Um, I haven't asked the council directly, so I should probably do that. I tend to not like taxes, but, uh, this is not a new tax. It's a tax I'm currently charging on my, uh, transactions at my business. Uh, so it wouldn't be a new tax. It would be carrying forward an existing tax, and I guess the, the reason I, I am supportive of this tax, I, I have mixed feelings on it, and I'm supportive on the fact that we can see direct benefit, uh, in Shakopee, in Scott County, and with a lot of, in, improvements that have been largely funded, um, with these dollars, uh, and they capitalize by getting other dollars to assist, whether it's Tiger, Tiger Grants or, or state dollars or federal granting. Um, you know, you can talk about sixty-nine, one sixty-nine, uh, forty-one, and one sixty-nine, part of the one oh one bridge. You know, there's a lot of, a lot of good things happening here with them dollars, and I learned, which surprised me, that thirty percent of those dollars are coming from outside, uh, people coming into our communities in Scott County, um, and utilizing our services and then paying that tax. So outside users coming in, using our infrastructure, are actually paying thirty percent of what's collected in that fund. So I'm supportive on that side. What I'm concerned about, and I raised with the scale meeting, is the electric-using cars are using the infrastructure but not paying for it, uh, or the gas users are, but both are actually using the infrastructure. So at some point, I'd like to see a position on making sure that all that use the infrastructure are actually paying for it, uh, whether that's on the electric purchased for the car, or, you know, some, some, something has to happen to make that work out. Uh, Vince, Vince, Vance, Vance Stahl from, uh, One Sixty-nine Corridor Coalition is also part of the state's multi-model regional board, um, and he, he's, has the exact same concerns. So as we, as we see the state pushing for electric use, they're cutting their own revenue. Unless they've come up with a way to have equity amongst the users, so that's probably going to be a topic of discussion, and rightly so.
Well, thank you, and that, uh, that sunset or that renewal, uh, is in the fall of twenty-two. Um, certainly, probably not something we would take up until next year sometime.
Right.
As a discussion, possible resolution, is that correct? Certainly, probably not something we would take up until next year sometime as a discussion, possible resolution, is that correct?
Correct. And my understanding is it wouldn't change in amount, which would make it really difficult for all of people that have to initiate this on the front end, that businesses and stuff, to go into their IT systems and change it all. So that wouldn't change. But it's something I'd like to know, probably, we should probably know before that discussion whether this council is supportive or not of that, so that I can properly represent this body's position.
Well, down the line, we can discuss it. I mean, it's not a county tax. They would like, obviously, city support. And I think that, you know, we could, we could talk about it down the line.
Absolutely, yep.
Counsel Lehman, thank you very much for that update. Moving forward, Counsel Whiting?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to point out, I had a conversation with Tim Zunker, the current acting executive director of the chamber. Things are, there's some struggles over there, that's for sure, some concerns, and he understands where the city's position is with the Main Street program, and it's great news, excited about the future over there, and working together with the city as a partner. So I'm looking forward to what comes out of that. A lot of decisions are going to be coming from the chamber board in their direction, so we'll, we'll see where that goes. But also, MVTA meeting tomorrow, so we'll have more on that the next time. But that's all I have.
Counsel Whiting, thank you very much. For my mayor report, I really don't, don't have one at this time. I've been concentrating on staying warm, which has been a tough full-time job of late. Mr. Reynolds, our administration report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Just really quickly, over the weekend, we did have another outbreak of COVID, this time in the ICE arena. We were concerned at one point where we thought we were going to need Zamboni drivers, so I, of course, was on YouTube trying to figure out how to drive a Zamboni. Fortunately, we didn't have to worry about that, so they were able to take a look at the scheduling to make sure that we had it covered. But once again, you know, this virus is having an impact, but city staff is remaining nimble and doing everything it can to make sure that we're continuing to deliver services.
Mr. Reynolds, thank you very much.
You know, Mr. Mayor, we could probably charge people to, they'd probably pay us to Zamboni. It's probably one of their, like, bucket list things. We should look into that, the revenue.
Very good. Thank you very much for your liaison report and the administration report. Item number 12, is there any other business before this council tonight? Any other business? Seeing none? Let's move ahead then. I would entertain a motion to adjourn, Counsel Brennan?
Make a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, March 2nd, 2021 at 7:00 PM.
I have a motion and a second by Counsel Contreras. Further discussion? Further discussion? I really want everybody to continue to be safe. We've made some good progress, but need to continue to make progress, so be safe. And everybody's been working on staying warm. I know I have, so stay warm. I think it looks like we broke it a little bit, but great. So motion on the table and a second. Further discussion, discussion, discussion by voice vote, Mr. Reynolds?
Counsel Contreras.
Aye.
Counsel Brennan.
Aye.
Counselor Lehman.
Aye.
Counselor Whiting.
Aye.
Mayor Mars.
Aye. Thank you very much. We stand adjourned here tonight at 9:11. Thank you all.
Thanks, everyone. Stay warm, be safe.